The 2022 Future Chef's Challenge will take place on Thursday, that's tomorrow, April 28th, from 3:30 to 6:30 p.m., right here in the Hamlet Middle School cafeteria. The theme of this challenge is your favorite recipe from a book or a movie made healthy. The wed community is welcome to join in some of our very own students as they showcase their ability in display of cooking excellence. Myself, along with Vice Chair Burke and Mr. Perrier will be serving as judges for that tasty event. And I know, Mr. Burke, that you and I have been waiting two or three years. It seems like even longer since we were last judges, and I can't wait.
It's been a while, but we look forward to it, yes.
And Mr. Perrier is also very excited about that wonderful event coming up tomorrow. So, very, very happy about its return. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. There will be a mental health kickoff ceremony on Wednesday, May 4th, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at Winsocket High School in the auditorium. There will be remarks by state and local dignitaries, community partners, district administrators, educators, and students. The Winsocket Education Department is the first public school district in Rhode Island to train students in teen mental health first aid, which is an evidence-based curriculum on mental health, suicide prevention, and peer interventions. Fifty of our students from the high school will be recognized for successfully completing the course this year, as well as four of our teachers. So I want to congratulate and advance all of those amazing students and teachers at Winsocket High School. The Transform Rhode Island Scholarship is being offered by the Pepito Opportunity Connection, which is the POC, a foundation that was started in December 2020 to support the Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities in Rhode Island. Nearly 100 students from 37 public, private, and parochial, parochial and charter high schools shared personal essays, fun slideshows, thoughtful research, dynamic videos, and multimedia presentations that answered one simple question: If you had $1 million, how would you change Rhode Island's communities of color? The five finalists were announced last week, and included were Miriam Kaba, a 10th grader at Winsocket High School. The project she submitted outlines a program that addresses job creation while simultaneously educating and restoring communities. She proposed a bimonthly job fair for POC with a final proposal called Restoring the Village, which would include monthly community cleanups, food and clothing drives, recreational events, donations to homeless shelters, investing in small businesses, and investing in outdoor recreational areas for youth. Each student who entered will receive at least $2,500. The winner, second and third place students, will be announced at a celebration on May 26th. Congratulations again to Miriam for being selected as one of the finalists. We wish her well, and we wish her all the best in her future endeavors. Approximately five years ago, Ms. Roxanne Carey, a reading specialist at Hamlet Middle School, created a sneaker closet to help build students' confidence. She started by posting on Facebook, looking for donations, contacted Donors Choose, contacted Senator Melissa Murray, who made an announcement at a city council meeting, and other donors reached out to her, wanting to buy new shoes and donate gently-used shoes for her closet at Hamlet. Any student who wants to pick out a pair of sneakers simply has to tell their teacher they would like a pair, and pick a pair of sneakers. The teacher will then bring them to Roxanne to receive those sneakers. There are at least two pairs for the students to choose from in their size, along with a new pair of socks. She has noticed that her students have had more confidence fitting in with their peers, which led to better academic performance. She had witnessed that this closet had also taught her students towards empathy, towards others. After the return from the pandemic, she contacted Donors Choose with a larger ask than before, and was happily surprised that it gained funding from several people, including Bob Kraft of the New England Patriots. So, Ms. Carey, Roxanne is here this evening, and I'd love to have Roxanne, if she would, come to the, step to the podium and talk a little bit more about this wonderful opportunity, along with her sister, Robin Crane, who is a reading specialist at the middle school as well. Ladies?
Thank you for acknowledging my sneaker project. This closet has been near and dear to my heart for the last five years. This past summer, it was finally given a name, the Nathaniel T. Sneaker Closet. Anyone that knew my nephew knew that his, for his love of sneakers. Since my closet has already received a shout-out by the Valley Breeze, I'd like to take my five minutes to bring other projects into the spotlight. Four years ago, my co-reading teacher, stop it, saw what an impact the sneakers were making, and decided to create a hygiene closet. Over the past four years, she has given out everything from toothpaste to toilet paper. Thank you, Erica Jacobson. Hamlet School social worker created a food closet. She has fed many of families over the years. Thank you, Ms. A. Hamlet's behavior interventionist has recently opened a clothing closet. She has put clothes on our students' back. Thank you, Mary K. These are just a few projects happening throughout the district. I would love the school committee to acknowledge one teacher's accomplishments per meeting. The public might be surprised at how our teachers go above and beyond for our students. Thank you.
That's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Anyone have any comments, questions for Dr. McGee? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the April 13th, 2022 closed session minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any changes, comments for the minutes? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclair?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the April 13th, 2022 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any corrections to the minutes? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclair?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. Does any school committee person want to take anything out of the consent agenda and discuss separately? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclair?
Yes.
Our time flies. It's up to you now, Dr. McGee, for your superintendent's report.
Wow, boy, that was quick. Jeez, and this is going to be quick as well. I just have a few personnel announcements to make. The district hired a culinary arts teacher at the Career Center, most recently, as well as an early childhood paraprofessional at Coleman Elementary School. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Well, thank you. Any questions for Dr. McGee?
I have a question on the transfers. They're transferred from where?
So, the, so the first one is a transfer from, it's a transfer position at the high school. That particular teacher transferred from a teaching position to one of the dean positions.
All right. Where he came from?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and the other is just a personal care assistant who transferred from one student to the particular student at Globe Park Elementary.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the One Subcommittee Report, which is the Finance Subcommittee. But what we discussed was the preliminary budget, which was the main focus. And I think we're going to be discussing that in your financial report. Is there anything else that we need to address at this point?
No, just, I gave the Finance Subcommittee a quick update on our OPEB account. Since the inception of our OPEB account, we've picked up about a quarter million dollars through that investment account, so that's done pretty well for us. And I also provided the committee with a quick update on our funding for the science labs and the auditorium projects that we have coming up, and kind of got into detail about that. The money will be coming from a carryover from our five-year capital plan, combined with some state money coming in for equity initiatives that the state has provided for us. ESER III as well, correct?
And which they've approved.
Yes, yes, it has been already approved. Both these projects, the funding is 100% secured at this point.
Any questions from me or Mr. Perrier? Do I make a motion to receive and place on file the Finance Subcommittee Report? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Leclair. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the financial update. Mr. Perrier? I'll turn it over to you.
The financial update, February 2022, in front of the school committee this evening. Currently, we are projecting to have a little over $100,000 surplus, $102,000 to be precise. On the revenue side, unrestricted state revenues projected to be $79,000 over budget. The final state aid number was increased in July 2021, when the final enrollment snapshots were processed at Ride. Our regular salaries are projected to be $2.038 million, under budget at this time, and when netted with the employee turnover allowance of a little over $1 million. This basically puts salaries overall, $1 million, under budget. And as a reminder, all vacant positions are encumbered, as though they will be paid throughout the year. And the district has approximately $400,000 in ESER funds budgeted for general fund salary reduction, and has now been applied to the general fund, driving that surplus up. Substitute salary line is currently projected to be 404K, under budget. It has picked up a little bit, so we've had a little bit better success filling the subpositions as of late. After-school programs are currently projected to be 144K over budget at this time. And again, we're still waiting to make our determination as to amend that to ESER II or not. That's going to depend on how we close out the fiscal year. Medical expenses are currently 357K under budget, and I think we're pretty comfortable with that at this point, because again, we've looking, when I do this report, I look through April. So even though it is the February update, we do take into consideration all the expenses through April. It's a pretty good, reasonable spread at this point to take a look and project for the end of the year. But again, hopefully, we continue to be solid in that department, and we do have some additional funds through the OPEB account that I mentioned earlier, and we do have some medical reserve that we can tap into if we need be. Additional speech therapists and contracted nurses services have been more than needed this year. Again, I think I've touched upon this before. We've moved these expenses out to ESER II at this time, and we'll continue to monitor these services. Also, to kind of talk about the budget a little bit, our budget for fiscal year '23 has actually taken this into consideration as well, but I could touch about that a little bit further down the line. Behavioral interventionists have been moved to ESER II at this time. We're looking at $227,000 coming out of ESER II for that. And then finally, we have expenses on the general fund for technology, building improvement, and buses. They're currently transferred off to capital funds at this time, but again, we will evaluate that as we get closer to the end of the year. We want to make sure that we spend down our ESER funds, so we're gonna, when we get closer to the end of the year and we have these expenses more finalized, we're going to make sure that we draw down those ESER funds as much as possible, because at the end of the day, we don't want to be giving back any of that money. So ESER II, we still have another fiscal year to spend through, and ESER III, we have two more fiscal years. So when we get closer to the end of the year, we have a little more, a little more solid of an outlook on how we're going to be closing out the fiscal year. We'll make those appropriate adjustments then.
Now, this update is as of the end of February.
Yes, that's correct.
So we still, at least from what we've been presented, we've still got four more months of data to look at. And in those four months, that's where you're saying, for those numbers, that we'll make a decision as to what we apply to ESER. So at the end of the year, we still should show some surplus.
Absolutely. And depending on how we close out, when we get a better handle on that, I'm actually going to be reconvening the Finance Subcommittee. At that point, we'll review both ESER II and ESER III, kind of go through how we've performed so far, and what we're looking to move off in expense, and what we're using the dollars going forward. I know ESER III is kind of in a holding pattern right now, where we're still waiting to determine exactly what's going to happen as far as the state bond goes. That's a very key piece to ESER III right now. Could be a $9 million swing one way or another. So that's really going to allow us to proceed with the expenditure of the rest of the grant once we have a little more info on that.
Now, that $9 million swing you're referring to, the portion of the bond that will be affecting Winsocket regarding any future construction of schools or rehabbing of schools, where we have not gotten the final word from either Ride or the governor's office, in terms of what's going to be, how they're going to approach a general assembly with this.
Precisely. That's probably going to be determined in June, I'm guessing. So I think we still have another couple of months to wait before we really find out that dollar amount. But once we have that dollar amount, we'll go, we'll move forward with the planning, and depending on what we get, that's going to depend on what we can end up doing.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Perrier? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the financial update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Leclair. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Ms. Morell to give us the special education update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I wanted to highlight this time around our unified sports that are in our schools right now. In the fall, our volleyball team that was run by, coached by Steve Robidoux and Michael Plasse, had won second place in the fall championship. And right now, we have our basketball team that is 4-2. Our next game is actually tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, and the high school against Barerville. We're doing a Fans in the Stands, where the students will be cheering on our student athletes. And we also have two junior coaches that are alumni students that are also assistant coaches for the basketball team. We also have a basketball middle school team as well, coached by Alfredo, I'm going to tear apart his last name, Taj. And the Unified Sports joins people without intellectual disabilities with students with disability, intellectual disabilities, on the same team. So we went to the Fans in the Stands in Lincoln High School a few weeks back. It was an amazing turnout. It's an amazing game to see. So if you're available tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., by all means, come on over to the high school. Also, below is a snapshot from April 13th of this year. The information, our numbers have gone up slightly. However, the number of students with IEPs stayed the same. The reason why our numbers went up is our students without disabilities has gone down. Our enrollment census has gone down a little bit. So it looks like we've increased slightly, but it's more of the student enrollment of students leaving. But we're roughly right now at 27.58% of students with IEPs. Any questions?
Any questions, comments for Ms. Morell? Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Good job. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Special Education Update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into new business. I'm going to make a motion to table the vote to issue a preliminary injunction not to renew the employment of a building administrator. Do we have a second on the table motion?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclair?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve to change the dean of students' positions into administrative positions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am looking at the link here that each of you has under this agenda, and so if you could go to the page that lists the fiscal impact, I'm going to, I'm going to be talking about that. The part prior to that lists the assistant principal roles and responsibilities, but we'll get to that later. So I'm asking the committee to change, so let me first start with a little history. About seven or eight years ago, the district, excuse me, added deans of discipline at our high school and each of our middle schools. So we have had a dean of discipline in each of the two middle schools, one, and we've had two, and we currently have two deans at Winsocket High School. My request is to, for a few reasons, which I'll get to momentarily, is to discontinue the dean positions and make those assistant principal positions specifically for discipline, with other duties as well, but primarily for discipline. You have here the fiscal impact for this request. So if we take the first column, where it says dean of student cost, each of those rectangles signifies a position. The top two are the high school positions, and the bottom two are the middle school The salary, and again, each is a top step salary based on the individuals that are in those positions currently, is $87,000. If you look at the next line, after-school detention stipend, so at the, at the high school, our deans are in charge of running the detention after school, and they receive a stipend for that. At the middle schools, they do not run detention, so there's not a stipend there for the, for the deans at the middle schools. If you go, then of course, there's the longevity, which is included in, you know, in their, in their pay. But the fourth line down, the missed coverage, $7,200, that's for each of the four deans. Because the deans are in the, in the teachers' union, they fall under the teacher's contract. So as a teacher, even though they're a dean, they're supposed to have a prep each day. Many times, the deans, they're just really extremely busy, and they don't have time to take that prep. So what the district has done is we've paid them their missed coverage, and that $7,200 is for the year. So, and then their total salary is the bottom line there. So if you then go to a 10-month principal, should say 10-month assistant principal cost, we have a salary at $93,709.40, which is what we currently are paying our assistant principals at the high school, at the middle schools, and also at both your citizens, which is the only elementary school that has an assistant principal. So if you go down to the bottom, just to give you a sense of what the fiscal impact on the district would be, we would actually be saving $5,000, believe it or not, by transferring the dean positions to administrative assistant principal positions. Currently, the way that it works is the deans do all the discipline. In situations where the dean has to, where, in a situation where the student would be suspended, they have to confer with an assistant principal, and the assistant principal is the administrator that actually suspends, because they have the administrative certificate to do that. The deans, by law, cannot suspend. So they're working with the assistant principals, but they can't do that on their own. It also provides us, by moving to assistant principal positions, in addition to saving $5,000, it gives the district more and the schools more flexibility to use those positions, because they're technically no longer in the union. So for example, their contractual day would be expanded. Right now, they have a contractual day, which, you know, would be like any other teacher at the middle school, the middle schools or the high school. So we would have much more flexibility with respect to that. So that, you know, that's my rationale for doing this, in addition to the discipline issues or the discipline responsibilities that they have, that they currently have. It would give us opportunities to utilize them in areas such as teacher evaluations, so we could have more administrators to conduct evaluations, in addition to their, to their discipline roles and responsibilities. So that's, that's the rationale behind this. And again, if you're looking at the bottom line, we're actually saving money by doing this.
So right now, we have four individuals?
There are four.
Four individuals are currently deans.
Yes.
So we want them to become assistant principals.
So...
Now, do they have the certificates necessary to?
They don't all. So of the four, at the high school, there is one current dean that does have the administrative certificate, so he would have the opportunity, you know, if he chose. The other dean at the high school is not, what we understand, is not returning next year. So that then leaves the middle schools. One of the two deans at the middle school at Hamlet is retiring, and the second dean at Villanova would be the one of the four that does not hold an administrative certificate. So that dean would then be permitted to go to the job fair to bid on a teaching position that she holds certification for.
So for the, for the positions that are going to be open, you're going to be looking for folks with the certificate?
Administrative cert.
Administrative certificate?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments for Dr. McGee? I can see, I can see. All right, I'm going to go to the vice chairman.
Mr. Burke, please go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I guess I blocked it there.
No, no, it's fine.
Those of us who've been in education for a long time, we realize that for years, an assistant principal dealt with discipline. It was only in the last, I don't know, 15, 20 years where academics got involved with the assistant principal. So in some sense, we're returning to that. This will give us now in the high school four assistant principals?
Yes.
And in the middle school, which does not have an assistant principal, well now, but his or her job must be just dealing with discipline, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so they won't be involved in other administrative tasks?
Well, they could, they could. So their primarily, their primary role is going to be discipline, but we have the flexibility with them, for example, to use them, whoever they may be, once they're certified to and trained to do evaluations. They could assist the principal and the other assistant principal in doing evaluations of staff in the building, and they could also be a part of any other type of administrative activity within the building. So it's kind of like we're getting more than just discipline, although that's primarily what they're going to be doing. And to be honest with you, that's probably, their day is going to be consumed with discipline. It's not going to change just because the, you know, there won't be any less discipline, I don't think, because, you know, there's an assistant principal versus a dean. So, but the flexibility that it affords us is greater than what we currently have.
And the tasks still include after-school detentions and things like that?
It would, yes.
Even though, okay.
It would.
It would.
Okay.
Mrs. Kapiskas, please.
Okay, I'm probably going to tip my hand by asking this question, but we have four deans right now. One of them has a necessary certification.
Yes.
The other two are leaving, and the last remaining one is going to be displaced.
Correct.
The one who's trained and has been doing this is going to be displaced, simply because she doesn't have the certification.
That's correct.
Doesn't seem to make much sense to me as a, on a logical basis. Why would you displace somebody who's trained, just because we're going to add a certificate requirement on, are we at least going to grandfather her in that job? That, to me, that would make sense. So you have someone with experience that you can grandfather into that position, and then when that person leaves the district, then you could require the next person to have that certification. That just makes logical sense to me, against a $5,000 savings.
Yes, but we lose the flexibility. I understand what you're saying, that it's somebody who's been in the position, who's been doing the position, but I look at it as having flexibility in that position to do more than just what the deans are doing now.
But by your own admission, it's unlikely that person will be doing that at this point. Their day will be consumed with discipline.
It'll be consumed with discipline, but it still gives us flexibility.
And can I add one more thing? My other concern is, deans, and you said it yourself, deans do not have the ability to suspend. They have to go to a principal and assistant principal who has the authority to suspend. Don't you think that that would actually be of some assistance in terms of trying to work things out with students? That they're talking to a dean who doesn't have the ability to suspend them, and that they may be more willing, more open to talk to them about what's going on, what's causing this behavior, what can we do to fix it? Whereas talking to an assistant principal, they know they're looking at the person who's holding the noose above their head. I can suspend you if I choose to do so, whereas the dean cannot. Isn't there value in that?
I mean, I'm sure you could, you could make the case for the value of having another person being involved in the process, but I think that, I mean, I see that as, to me, that's more of a social worker, where a social worker would be involved in a situation like that, where the social worker isn't sort of hanging that, you know, holding that noose over the... sort of hanging that, you know, holding that noose over over the the student's head. I I just, I just see it a little differently, Mrs. Kepiscus. I just think that the assistant principal in in most, in most places, the assistant principal is is the person who is responsible for the discipline. And and I mean, there may be some districts, I know, I'm not sure if Cumberland still has deans, I know they had deans, that was why we had decided to start the process eight years ago using deans because Cumberland had that. But I I think that most have assistant principals and the assistant principal could always refer to a social worker or a behavior interventionist who would not have the ability or the kind of the power to to suspend.
But that person would not necessarily have been practiced in it as this person has been, who's been performing this job for a number of years.
Yeah, I mean, certainly someone who's been doing it for a certain number of years would would have the experience. Yeah.
I just think to not grandfather this person into their position is penny wise and pound foolish, especially, I mean, I just think five thousand dollars in savings, it's a lot to me personally, but to the district, it's a drop in the bucket. And I understand your talk about flexibilities with regard to assistant principals. Well, the other three are going to be assistant principals, that you've made that the requirement. So when they get hired, they'll be hired into that position. But you're unilaterally changing the position out from under a person who's been performing the job, I haven't heard, other than successfully. I I just think that at least might want to consider grandfathering the person with the experience to stay. That's that's just my opinion.
Are you finished, Mrs.?
Yes, I'm finished, thank you.
You you were next.
Right. Um, you mentioned earlier that that it was extremely busy, this individual. So, I mean, how would he, if that's the case, how would this individual be able to take on the added duties of an administrator, principal, assistant principal as far as evaluations, if they're too busy doing those other things? That's a concern for me. And and we've all talked about and mentioned, and we just mentioned it earlier, we've have a hard time getting administrators. I think you're limiting that pool to a smaller, a smaller pool, as you would if you're just pulling from some of the the teachers in the building. I mean, we've got, what, six hundred teachers or something like that? So, I mean, there's a large pool as opposed to administrations, like, how many schools are empty now? We we mentioned earlier, two, I think, two schools. And we are looking for administrators and then we have other issues. So, I mean, I I think this is, it's a hard sell considering we can't find people to begin with, but we have people in that position also. And if they're extremely busy, as I mentioned, how can you take on extra duties? I'm assuming the principal, assistant principal itself is extremely busy doing evaluations. So now you're taking one position into two positions. You're giving all the the discipline and you're going to add on some positions from the other one. I don't know how you get everything done in a quality way.
I think in terms of the flexibility, they can be involved in after school type activities where the deans are not. For example, school improvement team meetings, they could be involved in that. They could be involved in, you know, any any type of of an activity that that occurs before the school day starts. That's all I'm saying in terms of the flexibility. And yeah, I mean, it it probably would be challenging to to take on evaluations, but there have been instances over the years where we've had, you know, whether an administrator has been out for a period of time, we we've had to really sort of regroup district wide to complete evaluations. So while this person might not have a caseload per se, this person could all, could be utilized for spot types of of observations to to assist. So it would just be an opportunity for us to have more people to fill in should we need it.
Mrs. Costa?
Right.
Yeah, you're up.
So I wanted to kind of go with what Ms. Kepiscus said as well, you know, as far as grandfathering that that one person in that that has been doing this for a long time. I kind of agree with that as well because they have been dealing with it. They kind of know the students already, they know what their needs are. So to take that away from a teacher that's already experienced with that or an admin person that's already experienced with that, I think that's kind of a, an issue that we should definitely talk about as far, like, as she said, grandfathering them in. And not only that, but maybe giving them the opportunity to get certified as well, maybe, you know? Give them the opportunity to be able to do that on on top of it. That could be something also that we maybe talk about. Because, yeah, five thousand dollars, it is a lot of money to save, but at the same time, is it worth the risks that come with it as well? Like, yeah, you see, you may see it differently than how we may see it, but then somebody else may see it differently than we see it. Not everybody's going to see it the same way. So I I do kind of feel like that one teacher should definitely be grandfathered in because it is definitely hard to find and fill these positions with good people at that.
I'm, I don't want to speak before.
Um, I I've got an issue with the ten months. If if it's a ten month principal and the day is going to be full of dealing with discipline, I don't see how that job or that position is going to be able to handle anything else effectively. It, I'm stuck, I'm missing, you say, well, they could do some something else, but if I'm, if my day is filled with disciplinary issues, how in the world am I going to do evaluations? I don't know what occurs now with the assistant principals, if they have to deal with discipline as well as, because I'm sure they may have to. So how is the, how, maybe you can help me understand, how is that going to work? Not just theoretically, well, they could help, but if they really not, then I don't see what we gain. Like, I agree with Mrs. Kepiscus, the five thousand is a drop in a bucket comparison to the, to the, to our budget. So maybe you can help me understand a little bit more.
So, like I said, when I say flexibility, I mean, you can use them as an assistant principal. The 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 deans currently work within the teacher's contract. So they're there at a certain time and they leave at a certain time. We can't ask them to stay any later or come in any earlier. With an assistant principal, you can do that. You can have them being part of after school type of educational activities during the day. They could be a part of other types of, you know, administrative duties. Now, what what does that mean? Right, they're primarily during the day, they're they're dealing with discipline. All this does is it gives us a little bit more of that flexibility before or after school to to perform administrative type duties. Now, I wouldn't necessarily give them a a a a full evaluation load, because I understand, you're right, they they're not going to be able to do that, but they could provide support to the administrators in the building around those evaluations. I would be willing, you know, Mrs. Kepiscus and, you know, Mr. Chairman, for that that fourth dean to grandfather that that person in. That's fine. If if that, you know, would make this a little bit, you know, more appealing to the committee.
Or it's in a transition or whatever until?
Yeah.
Maybe that, maybe that particular individual could be certified. I don't know if that's the case.
I I I I don't know what the, you know, if the person would want to be certified or not, but I'm certainly open to that.
Yeah. Just just respond, and I know you didn't allude to this, but I think most of these teachers, we just celebrated two teachers here, they usually go above and beyond, they hear before school, they hear after school. So I, so I, and I understand there's contractual issues, but I I think you just, we need to make sure that that's stated, that the teachers go above and beyond.
Oh.
And and I, and I think this is not going to be a good, a good answer for that, but I understand your point.
Yeah, no, they do. And I mean, and I, and I think I'm, I'm the, one of the strongest advocates of the teachers in here in Windsocket. I mean, I, but, but but when it comes down to it, the contract is the contract.
Correct.
And, you know, while they 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 probably already do go, I'm sure they go above and beyond. But at the end of the day, the teachers follow the contract, the union follows the contract. This gives us more flexibility. But again, I'm more than willing to allow, you know, the fourth dean, the the flexibility of being grandfathered in. Whether whether this, whether she wants to get certified or not. If she doesn't, then, okay, then, you know, doesn't need to.
Can can the contract be amended to the flexibility of their time or no? That's just.
I I don't think the union would be willing to to negotiate, to renegotiate that. I would love it. I mean, I'm I'm open to it, but I I don't.
Please no.
I I I don't think they would be willing to do that, so. May maybe in, maybe in two and a half years, but.
Right. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, for a second.
Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you. There were two dean of students in the high school presently.
Yes.
So my addition was wrong. We will now have five assistant principals in the high school.
So at at the high school, we currently have, we have two, we have three assistant principals right now.
And now we're going to add two.
So we would add two to that, yes.
This doesn't account the assistant principal at the career center?
No.
But that'll be six.
So the career center has its own assistant principal, yes.
Okay. Wow, all right. I'm also reading through the forty eight responsibilities, and it does sound like more like an assistant principal for academic slash discipline, to be quite honest. Supervises substitute teachers when teachers are absent, serves as a consultant to all curriculum committees, assists the principal in recruiting of teachers, assists the principal in the process of recruitment, selection and evaluation of substitute teachers. There's a lot of things here for this person. I I think the impetus for us putting in a dean of students is because we had behavioral issues that needed a sharper focus. And it was too much for the principals. Because, I mean, they couldn't handle it, but, you know, it was a little bit too much to give them a, to give them some help here. I I don't know, I I really, I understand the idea of your flexibility, but I think we lose the focus of the job by making it an assistant principal. That's just my thought.
I think, I'm sorry.
Please.
I just, for, I think, maybe recognized for a second time. My concern is, as Mr. Burke expressed, it's adding too much. You're taking someone who concentrates in discipline to potentially do another job on top of that. And I can tell you something, my boss told me when I told him I was going to run for school committee, subject to his approval, his response to me was, just remember one thing, you can't serve two masters and serve them both well. And I think you're asking an awful lot of this person to now make them do two jobs. Because the discipline job in this district, we all know, is probably more than one person should be handling. And I just, I just think that it's misguided. That's all I'm saying. I think it's misguided. And I appreciate your flexibility with regard to the person who has experience that will be displaced, which to me is, again, just foolish, to lose that experience. But it's not just that, it's those other two positions. Are we going to be able to fill them? We can't find administrators now. And let's face it, an assistant principal who has to handle discipline plus assistant principal duties, that's a thankless job. And they'd rather go someplace else where they can do less work for more money, and I don't blame them.
So, listening to my my colleagues, I just look at how much work can a person do well? So if I'm going to spend, if I'm a dean, or now you're making me an assistant principal, wonderful, but I still going to be spending my day in discipline, dealing with those issues. But then all of a sudden, well, we got these other things we'd like you to do. Well, how can I really separate myself to do both well? I don't think that's going to happen. I think it's going to be wishful thinking, and if the person says, okay, I'll do it, but it may not, both jobs may fail or could hurt because of it. That's the way I I see it, and that's what I hear. Because there's a lot, like, like Vice Chair Burke went through all all the things that are responsible, they're responsible for. There's a lot of academics, but who's going to handle and focus on discipline when it's so necessary? That's how we did it years ago, right? So for me, I I just don't think we should be doing this now. Any other comments? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger?
No.
Vice Chair Burke?
No.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
No.
Mrs. Costa?
No.
Mr. Leclerc?
No.
Next, I will, we'll, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the preliminary budget for two thousand twenty-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. This is an important item that that we're facing tonight because if we approve, if the committee approves this, then we will be, we'll be ready to sit with the city council. Because every year, we have a meeting with them to discuss our budget, the budget, the upcoming budget, especially in this year with S R two and S R three funds and just the whole, the whole issue of our finances. So it's going to be very important for us to look at this and hopefully approve this budget, because there's a lot, there's a lot hanging on this. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Perier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this FY twenty-three general fund budget was discussed at our finance subcommittee meeting last week. And let me just read the cover letter for you, and then we can kind of get into some Attached with this memo is a projected fiscal year twenty-three general fund budget for the Windsocket Education Department. Please be advised that this is just the first iteration of the budget at this time, as I foresee at least one amendment as we progress closer to the start of the school year. This iteration of the budget calls for a four percent increase in local appropriation from City Windsocket, and that's the the biggest piece probably that we're dealing with right now, as far as the budget goes in its entirety. With the ending of S R funding projected to be in fiscal year twenty-five, the local appropriation needs to rise now in order to offset some of the revenue loss when we reach to the end of our S R money. If we wait until fiscal year twenty-five, it will be too late to make any type of meaningful revenue adjustment to offset the loss of these S R funds, and and that's why we need to begin asking now. On another note, state aid has dropped by approximately fifty thousand dollars for the January update from RIDE. This is my first time working here in the last seven years where I've seen the state aid number drop. So this is going to be a new adjustment for the Windsocket Education Department as well. Final allocations have not yet been approved by the legislation. Once we get those final allocations, which we anticipate to get in June, when the legislation session wraps up, we'll be taking that back to the finance subcommittee and we will be continuing on with the work to figure out what we're going to do there. Just as a reminder, it's not all gloom and doom next year. We do have S R two and S R three dollars to fall back on regardless of what happens here. But I'm really looking further down the road, and I'm looking at fiscal year twenty-five as a real red light as far as the budget goes. The next two years, we'll have S R two, S R three to fall back on. That will be able to fill any gaps that we may potentially have here in the short term. But if we don't start addressing some of this stuff now from a local revenue perspective, it it's going to be a very difficult fiscal year twenty-five budgeting season, because we're going to be losing probably about, you know, fifteen to twenty percent of our overall revenue once S R dries up. And, you know, I think we've done a good job of how we spent S R so far, but in the end, seventy-five percent of what we do is personnel and benefits. So, yes, we have hired some people with S R two and S R three dollars, because you can't just buy, you know, Chromebooks and do purchase services the whole way. There there has to be some personnel, because that's really what we're all about here in the district. To go into detail about some of the expenditure side, right now, we're only anticipating about an increase of two percent for medical. So that's been budgeted appropriately for the general fund. When we are currently negotiating our renewal, and again, this will be updated when more information is needed. But again, remember, we do have the OPEB money and we don't look like we'll be tapping into that this year. We also have some additional mon, money set aside as far as the medical pooling account of ours. As I mentioned in our fiscal update, the district is moving several professional technical service expenses to S R two and S R three for the upcoming fiscal year. The biggest expenses coming off the general fund for fiscal year twenty-three will be contracted nursing services and occupational therapists. Also, SROs will be fully paid for the, by the Windsocket Education Department, as the COPS grant will be expiring at the conclusion of this fiscal year. Significant increases in the budget numbers for natural gas, fuel, oil, electricity have been added for the upcoming fiscal year. The finance department is currently investigating some ways to reduce these costs going forward through a utility, a utility rebid for these expenses, as well as a possible way to tap into utilizing solar energy. Property and equipment expenses will be handled by either the capital improvement fund or by the technology improvement fund for fiscal year twenty-three. At this time, we only have currently fifty thousand dollars budgeted for equipment. As stated earlier, this is currently a work in progress, and I will be following up with the finance subcommittee meeting in the coming months to give updates as the status and spend through both our S R two and S R three funds. The the funny thing about this budget is that, you know, we're being pulled in two different directions. First, I look at our, what we're looking at down the road as far as, oh, jeez, we really need to make sure we're in good shape in fiscal year twenty-five. But the other problem we have is these S R funds that we need to spend through. So we are ramping up spending a bit, even though we're coming kind of closer to a cliff in fiscal year twenty-five. And that's kind of the trick we're, we're working through right now. How are we spending these S R dollars? And are we spending them in such a way that we're not going to be in trouble when we get to the? when we get to the end of the ESR, ESR II and ESR III train here? So, you know, that's kind of always been a important thing for me to keep an eye on. And I think we've done a very good job of how we spent ESR II so far. But we just want to keep, continue to be vigilant on this going forward, and make sure that we set ourselves up as best we can when we get to the end of this in fiscal year 25. Trust me, I would love to retire in two years. And if I was retiring in two years, we wouldn't have anything to worry about. But I look down the road, and that fiscal year 25 is concerning to me. So that's why we have the budget presented in such a way, and that's the reason why we're asking for the 4% from the City One Sockit starting this year. That's, that's the overall, general overview of the budget. And if anybody has any questions and feedback, I'd love to hear it.
Just to underline some of the things you said, Mr. Perrier. Last, last year, we did not ask the city for an increase. I mean, we've been looking to do that. They had only given us one year, when we had some years ago asked them for $250,000 over each, each, you know, $250,000 per year for three years. They gave us one year. They didn't give us any more after that. But if we're not, if, in other words, to protect ourselves three years down the road, we need to start asking for that 4%. That's the maximum we can ask, is 4% of, of the, of the maintenance of effort. And once you get that, the reason there's a reluctance to that is the city council says, well, if we give you that increase, it stays there. You never can take it away. And if we keep asking each year, it keeps climbing, but if we don't, we're going to be, we're going to be hurting in a few years. And some of the charts that you have, you take a look at the cost per student, that Mr. Perrier, you know, and frankly, Brad, we're getting around $15,000 per student, that's the cost. But we're, we're like, there's like, maybe 30 communities, 35 communities that get more than us, looking at those numbers. So we know we are not getting top-of-the-line support from the state, because they've looked at One Sockit and said, city isn't really providing as much as they should. And there's a chart in, in this package that shows you that we had one increase, I think it's right after 2012, but then it pretty much stayed the same for the next bunch of years. So the city, in, in trying to save taxpayer money in taxes, has not really contributed anymore to the maintenance of effort, and it's about time that they do. That's why this budget is very important to, to vote on this preliminarily, knowing that we're going to have adjustments with ESR as we get more information from RIDE in terms of what's going on with ESR III. And hopefully that fund transfer in is going to go down. Because right now, to balance this budget, we've got $1,652 of transfers in from our reserves that balances the budget. So as we pull operating costs out, if we can, that's going to come down.
As we get more information on the bond, ESR III, we're going to make adjustments to ESR III, and we're going to recapture some of that money.
Right.
So that we will not be cutting into our fund balance in that amount.
Any, any comments for Mr. Perrier?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick one. The, our student enrollment is decreasing. And does that affect, is that the effect on the state funding?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's the biggest component in the state funding formula is your enrollment. So yes, as our enrollment's gone down, our funding is going to go down. 100% correct.
But even though our enrollment has gone down, our costs to educate all those students stays the same.
Yeah. Yeah. You have many fixed costs, like building repairs, any utilities. And I know we've been making a better attempt to reduce classroom size. So you say, well, you lose some students. Well, now our classrooms aren't, you know, over exploding. Now our classrooms are getting a little bit smaller. So does it really make sense to say, hey, we need to cut some, cut people at this point? It's not really what we're trying to do. We're trying to educate these students in the best way we can. And if that means smaller classroom sizes, that's what it means.
And also, the General Assembly is starting to look at the, the funding formula. Who knows where they're going to end up with this?
Well, I think they say that. They say that every year, and, and they look at it.
But they've got, they've got some actual movement on the floor, but that doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Yeah.
Right. Exactly.
I'm sorry, I've been, I've been around too long to, to believe that one.
Well, I know you're a good cynic.
So.
And that makes you a good finance director.
And again, that one, that one page that I'd like to point out, the one that shows kind of how our revenue has worked over the last 10 years or so, the, the state is looking at this, RIDE is looking at this.
The one in blue?
Yes, the one that's in, the one that's in blue. And it shows kind of how, you know, the state funding has gone up over the last nine years, and our local piece has stayed, you know, pretty, pretty neutral. The, you know, the, the state legislation is, is looking at this stuff now. RIDE is looking at this stuff now. They're starting to put this together. This was not the intent of the fair funding formula. The intent of the fair funding formula was, yes, to increase the state portion, but also in concert, have an increase in the local portion as well. And since I've been here, it's, it just hasn't happened. And when I started, the Budget Commission was here, we had a plan. The plan wasn't executed. You know, we did get a quarter million dollars when we negotiated that prior contract, but, you know, we were supposed to get another quarter million dollars a year after.
Right.
And, and that didn't come through. So this is, this is kind of where we're at now. And like I said, if, if we don't start asking now, it's, it's going to be a bad look on us. That's, that's really where we're at. So.
Any, any other comments? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Having no other items on our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:58 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.